This is a public meeting, an open meeting. The Open Meeting Act is posted in the back there, if you care to check on that. I would ask all of you to stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business here is approval of the -- oh, roll call, excuse me.
Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Van Dyke?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Now we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Your Honors.
Second.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
The first order of business is a special presentation by Big Red Kino to update on our building project. And Bill, are you doing the duty tonight?
I am.
Okay.
I made Todd go solo last week, so, or last month, so. Well, first of all, Chairman Van Dyke and council members, we're really glad again that you've given us a little time on your agenda here. I think you've probably all -- I'm assuming everybody's been by the building, I hope so. And we're certainly pleased with how the contractors are doing, and they seem to be, you know, going hard at it. They -- and we hope you are as well. There's, you know, a lot of the work that's left to be done is on the interior of the building, obviously, which I'm sure you're well aware of. We're -- right now, we're looking at -- we did get a little bit, I think Todd told you last summer here, we're looking at an end of June open date. We're actually pushed back a little bit because we got some rain with the concrete work and stuff. So we're actually looking more of a first week of July open date at this point. And that's our hope, is that we can stick to that. We think that if we get -- if we stay dry this week, we get chamber commerce weather like we had today, then we should be able to get the rest of the concrete work done this week. And after that, really, the rain delays and things, you know, shouldn't be a big issue for us. We're looking at, you know, the lots and the walls are up, the utilities are all in, we're getting ready to start the interiors. Todd and I just did a kind of a walk through the building, and they're really just about ready to start on the interior finishes. And actually, when we got there, after we got there, the trucks pulled up with all the parts for the cooler, so they were kind of building a big, you know, like a big puzzle. They brought in all the cooler pieces, and they're actually assembling that over there now as we speak, so that's great. The sign is being built offsite by Brad Love, is putting together that sign for us, and so we're hoping to get that in before too long. But he's actually working on that separately offsite, and it'll be a nice-looking sign on the corner there. And we've just finished also the purchase for the TVs from, was it Jason, over at Mid City, that -- and we're getting those TVs in. We're gonna have about 50 TVs total for the public to view in there, so we think it'll be a real nice -- some of them are real big, all of them will be HD, all flat screen, so we think it'll be a real nice presentation that way. And really, that's my update for the month, unless you have questions for us.
Looking good.
Thank you.
My birthday's on the 31st of July, so I'm gonna be very disappointed.
There shouldn't -- I would tell you, I don't think there's gonna be any problem with that, so. I don't think 31st of July will be a hurdle. Yeah, good, good. Well, we're very pleased, we're really excited to get open. You know, it's gonna seem probably a little slower here over the next few weeks because all the activity's gonna be going on inside the building as opposed to outside, so you're not gonna see as much going on. But trust me, we'll be very busy inside and getting things done. And we wanna make sure that actually, once we're done, we're gonna need a few days, obviously, for -- to get our folks acclimated to that place, and make sure that even the kitchen works and so forth, so we give people a real good experience the first time they walk in. But we're making some plans for that as well, and we'll give you some more information on that as we get closer, so.
What kind of turnout did you have for your fair?
Oh, that's a great -- thanks, I was gonna mention that, and thank you. We had about 85 people turn out for our job fair, we were real pleased with it, and we're actually planning another second job fair. We're gonna do -- we did the other one over at the Workforce Development Office, we're gonna do this one at the roadway. And do we have a date for that yet, Todd?
Um, first or second week.
First or second week. So, first part of June, we're in discussions now with roadway just about space and so forth, but we wanna get that a little closer to the job site, and we're looking to do that first or second week of June. So we're very -- it actually went real well, we got some real good hires out of that, and we're hoping with the second round, we can complete our staff, so.
If you are going to have an open house thing, I know a few of the council people that have practiced on other restaurants and are available if you wanna practice on them, so just let us know if you can do it.
That's good. I was thinking, some of you look like veterans, so we'll get that -- we will definitely have some plans in that regard, and we'll be letting you know about that, so.
Some of the others will go the first time, and then I'll come with the group that comes the second.
You're gonna go to the second round, all right. All right, well, we'll make sure we get those all timed out correctly.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
And we'll move into public hearings then. Our first hearing is to amend Section 27-401 of the Official City Code to allow feed preparation for animals and fowls as a conditional use in zoning District I-1. And Scott, do you want to open that hearing, and then we'll...
Certainly. President Van Dyke and council, this request comes solely on behalf of the staff. This was a culmination of several discussions after we were approached by a local businessman desirous of expanding his business. Scott Watson, who's one of the owners of Vitaman, which is located on South First Street, where the railroad tracks are on the east side of the street, indicated his desire to expand his business in the former MPPD building that's located, or currently that's in the process of being sold along Omaha Avenue. He wanted to expand his business there. The current zoning classification that best described his business did not allow for him to move directly onto that property in the I-1 district. The I-1, or, excuse me, the I-2, the heavy industrial district that it did allow, we felt would be an inappropriate fit at that location, and discouraged him to pursue that route. We looked at the code and decided that we felt it best to amend the code, insert the opportunity for him to secure a conditional use permit at that location, which kind of gives him the opportunity to expand his business and allows us the oversight that we would need to make sure that that operation blends well with that particular neighborhood. So this was the recommendation that came forward that was satisfactory to him and his business partners about their desire to expand their business. And if this amendment to the code is approved by you all this evening, or in the future, depending on how you wanna perceive that, or how you wanna approve that, he would follow that up with a conditional use permit request to the Planning Commission with the specifics of his operation, what he intends to do at that new location. He does want to keep his existing location as a viable business operation. Parts of that operation would be transferred as a part of this, some of them would stay. He's expanded some business lines and just simply needs to expand his business operation. So this was the culmination of a lot of discussion with several folks trying to come up with a way to give him an opening, if you will, to make that expansion, but still allowing enough oversight for us to make sure that that was a good fit and blend in that neighborhood with the things that he does. So that's a brief background of what got us to where we are today. If you have any questions, I'll certainly try to attempt to answer those.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would also like to speak in favor of this change? Okay. Anyone here who would want to speak in opposition to the change? Any council members have any questions that you might wanna ask?
I'd just like to say that I talked to the owner, and he explained to me what he was doing. I had a couple of questions, and it sounds like a very good deal if we can get it to go down there, and he would be hiring some more employees, and it would be good for the city, so.
Scott, I guess I have a couple of questions on it, because, you know, we're not business-specific, we're action-specific here with the conditional use permit. Granted, we are a little bit more business-specific that way, but I guess my only real concern about it is that, you know, if it doesn't fit in I-1 and it only fits in I-2, what kind of problems are we creating for them, other than, you know, granted, I see that we're gonna be attaching some conditions to it, but, you know, I guess I am a little bit concerned about, you know, if we don't touch on everything, then we're opening some doors up, and we get a problem, then especially once they get moved in in there that way, so. You know, 'cause when I look at the matrix and I see what's allowed outright in I-1, I don't see a lot of things that are real comparative to this set of operations that way, and I guess that's what concerns me more than anything else.
Certainly very valid questions, Councilman, and I guess all I could offer you is, if you decide, I toured the interior of his property, I looked at what elements of the operation were contained within the four walls and were not happening outside. I questioned in my own mind, based on what I saw there and what he describes to me that he wants to expand into, why it wouldn't be allowed in I-1. I really felt comfortable with what he was describing, I looked at the operation, I've personally inspected that building on multiple occasions in my 14 years here, so I did have a bit of a background on what went on there. I didn't see the noise, smells, those negative impacts that would generally, you know, have a bad impact on a neighborhood that warranted an I-2 application, in my estimation. There wasn't really another category to slot him into that gave him outright permission, and so we looked for a way to let him describe in very significant detail what it is he wants to do there, and see if we can create a conditional use permit that would provide those safeguards, provide those balances to preserve the neighborhood integrity, and still allow him to expand. So really, what this request is doing tonight really lets him ask the question, it doesn't give him outright permission, he's got a whole other process to go through. Either it will sell on the merit of what it is, or it won't, based on the ability to answer those concerns, or write a condition that would govern those concerns in a manner that you all think is appropriate. So we were just looking for a way to try to let him keep jobs in town, expand his business, and do that in a manner where we could preserve the balance of it the best way we could. So certainly, if, Councilman, if there's another plan of attack, we'll be more than happy to explore that.
Okay, and what I was getting at is, I wasn't really opposed to it occurring, I'm just wondering why it doesn't be -- if it isn't noise, and it isn't dust, and it isn't sound, or, you know, smells or stuff like that, then why aren't we, instead of doing it as a conditional use permit, doing it as an allowed permit in I-1, or an allowed activity in I-1?
There's certainly -- that's certainly an option that we could explore. It's certainly an option that we could explore. I felt the conditional use permit gave specific controls over his specific operation, and if it changed, we would have a tool by which we could manage whatever came next. So I just felt like it was safer having the conditional use permit element of it. If that's not, if it's just the body, you know, we can certainly shift gears and go in a different direction. I appreciate your comments very much.
City Attorney, would you like to comment?
Scott, Councilman Langy, one other thing with that, as you look at the matrix and where we put that in there, is feed preparation for animals and fowls. I think that what, in the discussions that Scott and I had, it was thought that as it relates to the particular business that's seeking to expand now, it would be probably fine to put it in as a permitted use. You're not seeing the kinds of concerns that you think would be the kinds of things that you really feel compelled to maybe address with a conditional use permit, but I think the concern, at least that I had, would be that there may be other feed preparations that would fit into that same thing, that would not maybe be so compatible, that may be problematic. And so I think that we really ended up with that for this one, not because of this particular expansion, but what else might come along later.
Anyone else come in? Not have a planning report?
One more, excuse me. On May 4th, 2010, the Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing to amend Section 27-401 of the Official City Code to allow feed preparation for animals and fowl as conditional uses in zoning District I-1. Vitaman Company at 1507 South First Street wants to relocate their operation to 306 East Omaha Avenue, which is zoned I-1. The zoned district does not support this type of business activity. Instead, the rezoning of the property on Omaha Avenue, and the city staff made the determination to amend the zone code to allow feed preparation for animals and fowl as conditional use. The Vitaman Company will now have to bring an application for a conditional use permit to the Planning Commission in order to successfully move the operation to the Omaha Avenue location. The Planning Commission voted 8-0 to approve the amendment.
We'll then close this hearing and move on to Item 17, which is a consideration of Ordinance 55113, amending Section 27-401 of the Official City Code to allow feed preparation for animals and fowl as a conditional use in zoning District I-1.
Your Honor, I would introduce the Ordinance 5113 on first reading.
Second. Okay, motion. Second, any discussion? Here's the only comment I would make, it's great to see one of the first ones of about four, I think, MPPD buildings are gonna be in use, and somebody finds a use for them so that we don't have those buildings sitting around waiting and waiting for somebody to buy them or purchase them. So it's a good idea. Any other comments? Please vote.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 27-401 of the Official City Code to allow feed preparation for animals and fowl as a conditional use in zoning District I-1. Provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Now you may vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5113 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5113 on second and third. Second.
Okay, motion made to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on second and third. Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5113 carries on second and third.
We'll then move to a public hearing, and we're gonna combine a couple of them here. Public hearing to consider amendment to the Norfolk Comprehensive Plan at 5700 West Norfolk Avenue for conservation development to commercial, okay? And then also a public hearing at the request of Jed Christensen for zoning change from A agricultural district to C3 service commercial district at 5700 West Norfolk Avenue. And Scott, I guess we'll start with you first.
President Van Dyke and council members, this request came to us from Mr. Christensen with his desire to build and locate a office building for his commodities business that he intends to operate at that location. He found this site desirable for what he wanted to do with it. Obviously, the agricultural zoning that is currently in place doesn't allow the office use that he desires, so he was looking to seek a zoning change that would allow him the opportunity to erect a building that indicates somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 square feet, that could employ four to five people, perhaps, that he could start this business operation at that location. We had significant discussion with him during the course of those pre-planning-type meetings, talking about things like water and sewer and infrastructure, things that were absent from that area, access issues, lots of those type of things. And at the end of the day, Mr. Christensen felt this was the best location for him, and wanted to pursue the pending action that we have before us tonight. The Planning Commission heard several comments from the neighbors regarding their concerns for the type of septic system, hoped that there wouldn't be a lagoon-type system. We had testimony ranging from radio interference with the local radio station's tower that's in the immediate area, and other type of comments. So I believe some of those individuals will be here this evening to comment on some of those concerns or questions that they might have. I'm not seeing Mr. Christensen in the audience at this point in time, I was hoping he'd be here to answer his own questions specific to his business. I will, as the hearing goes along, try to answer any questions you might have from a staff perspective on how the rules apply, or how we got to where we are today. I will add that if this body were to approve this zoning change, he would need to secure a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission to operate his septic system, his waste disposal system, at that location. In the advent of our wellhead protection ordinances in this area, septic systems are prohibited unless that relief is granted in the form of a conditional use permit. And so, just so you know, there's a secondary process that's at work in regard to this as well. So with that, as a lead-in, I'll answer any questions as you move along.
You run on the council, I have a question for Scott at this point.
Scott, could you define the designation conservation development a little bit? Its current status in the plan?
That's a good one. Some of the outer perimeters of our two-mile jurisdiction came with that designation. It was one of approximately 26 categories that the consultant labeled us with at the time that we had our count plan rewrite that was adopted back approximately 10 years ago. So I'm not sure that I can give you a good description of what conservation development is, in other than it's a reserve, describes it as kind of a reserve area for future development, but it doesn't define, give any real characteristics of defining exactly what that's gonna be. So if you look at our comprehensive plan map attachments that specify the future land use, it doesn't even extend far enough west to capture this land, because our boundaries have grown so much, our two-mile area has grown so much, it didn't even fully encompass this area at the time it would have been in the county's jurisdiction. So we merely went with the closest designation that was on the outermost portion of our west boundary, and kind of applied that because we didn't have a baseline to change it to. So certainly, it's not commercial, and it wasn't before, so we felt that indicating some type of change was the appropriate course of action. So it is a bit of a mystery land out in that particular area, based on several factors, so.
Kind of vanilla, huh?
Yes.
Scott, with our wellhead protection, will he fall? You did say he will fall within that, so he'll have to come get a special use?
Yes, sir.
How are we going to, I mean, let him do that when he's in our well protection area?
Well, we've asked, I've asked for a lot of input from Mr. Smith, our Public Works Director. Dennis made it very clear from day one that we had a significant natural resource, an asset of the city, that was very important to us to preserve, and was very forthright with Mr. Christensen early on, that we had to be very stern in our safeguarding of that asset. He did, however, Mr. Christensen did, however, understand that there was a process by which he could ask for special permission. The conditional use permit is that mechanism. What Dennis has done is tried to establish what a typical average residential discharge rate would be for a home setting, and apply that standard, or that discharge rate to that location. In simple terms, an average household may produce more waste than this business office with five employees without the presence of laundry, or showers, and those type of things. So he tried to establish an average rate, which he's done, and that language would be contained in the conditional use permit if, in fact, this zoning change is pursued, and he pursues that conditional use permit. So there is language that's based on some science that was presented to us by Mr. Smith about those standards, so that we could make sure that the discharge rate wasn't excessive and wouldn't ultimately be an environmental impact on the well protection area out there. So there is a process by which we would use, the details of that permit are not prepared at this point, because it's a bit premature until we know how this zoning change activity's gonna go.
I know we've been trying to protect our wells out there, and how many do we have out there?
Seven.
We have seven wells out there. We've been trying to buy the land when it comes available, and we can afford it, to build a ring around our water so that we can preserve our water, so nothing happens to it. And I know Dennis has been working hard to try and let us know when things come about. I've been here for a while, and I've been trying to build that ring around that water source, so that what happened down on First Norfolk Avenue doesn't ever happen to Norfolk again, and the protection of that well is very important. So I think we need to be concerned with that aspect of it, just for that case, and that stuff worries me when it gets that close to our wells, so I just wanna make that statement so people are aware that we've been trying to keep things away from those wells for a long time, so.
Very appropriate.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone who wants to speak against it, or has some questions would like to ask about
Council President Van Dyke and members of the council, I appreciate having the opportunity. All of you I've spoken with already on this matter, but I appreciate the opportunity to reiterate my position on behalf of WJAG Incorporated on the record. We stand in opposition to this development for a host of reasons. First and foremost, from a personal perspective, I think spot zoning is dangerous, particularly at this area, and how it will potentially affect our business and our significant investment we have out there. This spot zoning sets a precedent for future zoning out there, and there are certain things that we have to protect with regards to the signal that we emit from there for our own operation, and also the effect we will have on neighbors in the area as well. I do have a document that I'd like to share with council, I'll pass a copy of it for each of you, there's one for council, and also for staff before us, and then I have a copy as well for staff that's present here, and if media would like a copy, I'd be happy to provide you with one as well. This document is from our consulting engineer, who's based out of Georgia. He's a very reputable consulting engineer firm, a licensed and accredited consulting firm. And I asked for him to prepare this document on the effects of this type of development near our broadcast tower that it'll have on us, and what it will have on any neighbors in the area. And if you'll allow me, I'd like to read from it rather briefly. "He asked us to render an opinion regarding construction and other development proposed in the vicinity of the WJAG tower in Norfolk, with issues and what issues might arise as a result. As a broadcast technical consultant, I have overseen and supervised the preparation and submission of applications and the construction and operation of AM broadcast facilities since 1982. Some background on the Federal Communications Commission's rules and procedures also provide additional guidance. The FCC encourages radio owners to locate their station towers and antennas in rural areas removed from population and infrastructure as much as possible," which we did 70 years ago at that site. "Even microwave," let's see, where am I, "to preclude interference to nearby electronic devices such as telephones, televisions, and security systems. Even microwave ovens and stove timers have the potential to be affected from very strong radio signals. The homes or businesses constructed within WJAG's blanket contour, which is within 80 meters or 262 feet of the stations operating at 780 kilohertz, are subject to interference to electronic equipment due to the operation of the AM station. Interference to electronic devices, although at a much reduced level, can and do also occur to typical consumer electronic devices at distances as much of a mile or more." "The FCC recognizes that towers, power lines, and urban clutter have the potential then also to negatively impact the actual transmission of an AM station's signal and tower if it's located within a half a mile of a non-directional station's tower. The FCC, of course, restricts and conditions other broadcast tower construction, including cellular and other communication media, within these distances, because they regulate that, and such construction must demonstratively prove that the construction has had no impact on the AM station's operation or signal. They do so to the FCC. Since the FCC has no jurisdiction over construction of buildings not licensed by the commission, the FCC, WJAG must rely upon the local government to protect the longstanding operation of the station. The scope of any proposed construction could have adverse effects on the operation of WJAG if not properly reviewed and coordinated prior to construction. In conclusion, although development of the land surrounding the WJAG tower may occur, homes and businesses in the area could be subject to interference," which some of the property owners shared at the planning and zoning meeting, "are subject to interference to their electronic equipment. Construction of towers or tall buildings in the immediate vicinity of the AM tower should be limited. WJAG should not be held liable or responsible for the elimination of interference received. Further, WJAG should be protected from structures and/or construction that have the potential to negatively impact its FCC-licensed operation within the above-described radius from the WJAG tower." Given the fact that we have our concerns, there is the wells out there, this to me just really seems like a bad idea. While I've had the occasion to... I've had the occasion to visit with Mr. Christensen and hear his testimony at the planning and zoning meeting, I'll be frank with you, I don't believe what he intends to do is going to cause us a problem. What I'm concerned about is the future, what additional rezoning may go on out there. I don't want to have to battle this each time somebody wants to, you know, zone a certain section out there. It seems to me that we need to come up with a little better plan for that entire area. I'm fully, of course, in support of growth and commerce in our community, and I know the community is growing that way, but I think we just have such a significant investment out there, as does the city with their wells, that, you know, this needs to be looked at, I think, with a little more conversation and consideration of our company that's been operating out there for over 70 years. In addition to all that, WJAG is the licensed, by the federal government, emergency alert primary relay station for about 100-mile radius, I believe. We're the primary feed to every competitor within 100 miles of the radio and television operation. We're the primary feed in the event of nuclear attack, in the event of natural disaster. Our only remote broadcast facility happens to be at that WJAG site. It's a hardened shelter. It's, in the event of any catastrophe, it's the only radio station that likely will be on the air to broadcast emergency information on behalf of the federal government. So the idea of us at some point moving as the community grows that way is just not that simple. We have a huge investment there. We have a commitment, you know, to fulfill the requirements of our license to the FCC, which is to operate in the public interest and to make certain that we can disseminate emergency equipment, not only to the communities that we serve, but the communities within 100-mile radius and the other radio and television operations out there. So I'm a little bit passionate about this. I just think we need to have some more dialogue to prepare a plan that makes sense, that protects our interests, what we're trying to do in the public interest out there, and proper zoning, rather than just going in and plopping one in there right now. I don't want to do this again. I've got better things to do, and I know you all have better things to do. And I think we should really sit down at the table and come up with a better plan.
Any questions for Brad? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Questions? Go ahead. Please state your name and sign in.
My name is Norine Reckling, and I'm a neighbor to the area out there. And I would like to thank the council president, Van Dyke, and the rest of the council members for letting me speak tonight. And I agree with Brad with the interference because we live there. We do have interference on our telephone. We pick up the WJAG radio station through our cell and our regular phone on occasion. And the other thing I think should be addressed is the traffic out there. I think the traffic engineer for the Department of Roads, Chris Winter in Lincoln, should be contacted and maybe brought out there and decide, you know, how much traffic will be on there and what impact it will have on the traffic out there. And like I said, I am concerned also for the radio tower especially because it is a landmark and it's important to our community. Are there any questions you'd like to ask?
I did have an additional comment that I failed to share with you, and that is-
Thank you.
If I may, council president.
Go ahead.
I did have the occasion, you know, at the planning and zoning to make certain, and I wanted it on the record, and I want it on the record here, that Mr. Christensen understands that in addition to what I just shared with you a moment ago, I am concerned about his business operation as well. I mean, it really would be silly for me to try and, you know, shut down growth, a potential advertiser, but, you know, first and foremost, we have to protect our interests. But one of the things that is of concern is that we will cause interference. Given the nature of his business, he plans to commence there. He's going to have satellite receivers. He's going to have telephone and computer equipment. And there's no question, the proximity that his planned construction is to our broadcast tower and the copper radials that he emit into that field to send the signal out are definitely within the danger area for him. I don't know exactly how far you guys live from the tower.
Three eighths of a mile.
Three eighths of a mile. This is obviously going to be tremendously closer. Mr. Christensen contended that, you know, he did a little bit of research to make certain that he could construct using materials to protect him from the RF that we emit from that tower. Again, that RF within the legal limits, according to the FCC. That's a tremendous expense. I mean, he can, he has the right to do that if he wants, if zoning is approved for him. But I did ask the question if he was doing his research based on FM frequency or AM frequency, and there is a significant difference in how that the RF is emitted in both of those instances. He didn't have an answer for me, which concerned me on his behalf because the way it comes out of an FM is very different than how it comes out of an AM. He would have to protect even the ground because the radio signal, the radio wave will come through the ground. We're there because the water's out there. It's a conductor. You know, we protect the wells. They're just as important to us as they are to you. And those copper radials, you know, work as part of the antenna system. And so, you know, he can build walls or whatever, but he's going to have to build floors to protect them, which I have a difficult time believing he's going to be able to achieve. To me, it makes absolutely no sense. With other businesses that are vacant in town and other places for him to locate, it's just as amazing to me that he wants to go out there. He has that right, I guess, but given, again, the well situation, our significant investment in the community that's out there, it makes no sense to me. Thank you for letting me allow that, add that.
Right, before you leave, in reference to that, you know, maybe this operation is not really going to be too detrimental to anybody out there, but should another C3 operation be in there, what kind of a distance criteria-
Sure.
-are we talking about to protect those people from the RF interference?
Sure. Well, again, you know, from what I know, with regards to what Mr. Christensen has told me and has said publicly, he's not going to be an issue for us. Again, I'm concerned about what else may happen out there. A half a mile. We need protection of about a half a mile for any structure of any kind in excess of 60 feet, whether it be a building, a tower, a silo, or anything that's going to start interfering with our signal. There are certain electronic devices that could potentially interfere with our signal. I don't know that Mr. Christensen would have any of those. We're much more apt to be a discouraged detriment to him. He's not going to like us, and we've warned him. He's going to have problems. But about a half a mile to answer that question. The other thing is, you know, even a one-story metal building, if at some point, this is why I get concerned about the precedent this may set, if we zone this where somebody can go out there and put some type of rental storage-type facility that's all metal type of a building, any metal buildings, once we start getting several of them out there within a half mile of that location, it's going to interfere with our signal. It's going to start bouncing off of everything, and it's going to screw up our coverage pattern, which then becomes a compliance issue with the FCC. Now, I do have our local engineer, Jerry Juraska, here, and if I've misspoken, please tell me, but I believe I'm correct.
That's true.
And I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak or ask questions concerning the issue?
Hi, everyone. I'm Richard Reckling, and we just live on South 61st, which is just across the field west of where the towers are. And like before, he said he was going this for being on the country in cost. I guess nothing in sound suited him. It's a little off the wheel, dear. I think he was asleep at the wheel, and he should have bought the rest area out here, and he had his water, sewer, electric, everything else, but I guess that didn't happen. But the thing that he might want to be concerned about is, right where he's wanting to put this, there's no turnout, there's no frontage road. And people in the west are crazy. Those 26 ton people, eight past 70 mile an hour on the shoulder of the road. And we've been wiped out a couple of feet times already. They don't slow down. They're already running at, and it's 45 and 50 mile an hour speed. We come over church yesterday, and while I seen the signs, we'll check it out. I'm pulling in, and she says, "What's your hurry?" I was going, "Hurry?" That bull rack about wiped us out because he wasn't getting over, and people don't. Somebody's going to get hurt out there if they don't change the road or something because with eight, he said six to eight people working there. That many people going in every day and with the amount of people going, his clients or whatever you want to call them, there's going to be a lot of traffic in there, and it's going to be a congestion. And I hate to see somebody get hurt, and it's going to happen. So I appreciate your time.
Would you sign in, please?
Yeah, all right, sure.
Anyone else? Scott, we'll have a planning commission report.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 4, 2010, for an amendment to the city of Norfolk's comp plan from conservation development to commercial in the 5700 block of West Norfolk Avenue. Jed Christensen requested a zone change from A to C3 on this parcel, causing the comp plan amendment. He wishes to erect an office building on the parcel to house his agricultural futures business. This zone change request requires the amendment to the comp plan. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of the amendment to the comp plan on an eight to zero vote. The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 4, 2010, for a zone change from A agricultural to C3 service commercial at 5700 West Norfolk Avenue at the request of Jed Christensen. Mr. Christensen wants to open an agricultural futures business office on the parcel, which requires a zone change, an amendment to the comp plan, and a conditional use permit for a non-residential septic system. Several neighbors voiced concerns with access and wellhead protection. WJAG, owner of the property directly east, is especially concerned with interference from radio transmission and the continuation of development in the area, causing additional transmission issues. The commissioners expressed their desire to support orderly development as it progresses west. Concerns with wellhead issues and access from will be monitored and reviewed. The planning commission recommended approval of the zone change from A to C3 on a seven to one vote.
Yeah, we'll then close this hearing, and we'll move to item nine-
Ivan?
Yes.
Could I ask this question?
Sure.
Scott, the comp plan and all that goes out to the extent of our zoning jurisdiction, correct?
It went to the extent of our zoning jurisdiction at the time it was created.
Right.
Our lifeline is just a little farther than last time.
Right now, this property is how far out past our current city limits approximately? Or do you know?
Like about a mile and a half.
About a mile and a half, I think.
That's roughly.
5700.
Yeah.
And then, do you know on the, so once we hop outside, our zoning, our comprehensive plan out there, the county comprehensive plan kicks into play, what's there, what do they call for out in that area? I knew John was here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is John Johnson. I'm the planning director for Pierce Counties. That area, we joined in with the city with wellhead protection. And in the county, it's a little bit different because we're not ever expecting to have water and sewer in our areas. So basically, we only allow in our wellhead protection plan two zoning districts, rural residential and agricultural transition, with smaller lot size than what the city allows, but with a density that is either more restrictive than the city's or as restrictive. So in that area, we can't have anything commercial or other than what's been grandfathered in. We have buck septic service, and then the, basically, that's it. And about the only thing that we have that's even pushing commercial right now is the riding stable Rista Ranch, and primarily is pushing commercial because no one's living on the property. They have a residential septic, but they are renting out riding space and allow people to rent bedrooms there and spend the night. And that was a conditional use on the city's part, or on the county's part.
One question before you leave then, John.
Sure.
Excuse me, I was just playing devil's advocate to get you up here, too, that way.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome. So basically, what you're telling us is a commercial development, as that's, if our city boundaries had not expanded to the point that we had taken this area in, the commercial development would not have been allowed in that classification in your area currently now anyway, so.
Yeah, that, the 275 corridor, in addition to being in the, being in the wellhead protection area, in that particular area, is an area that our comprehensive plan calls for limited development because of the soil conditions and the ability for septics to absorb, and that's one reason it's in the wellhead protection area.
I have a quick question, and it might be for John, it might be for Scott or Dennis in the back. About eight years ago, didn't we have a survey done, or somebody did a survey, I was on a subcommittee, where we closed down some wells out there that were not being used or were on farms? Do you remember anything about that?
To my knowledge, we haven't closed that. We did a survey of all the wells that are out there.
That's what it was. We didn't have to do any closings of them, but we surveyed them so we knew where they were at and tried to follow the flow, didn't we, to see if they hit our wells?
We did a survey, and DQ drew up the wellhead map that shows the ways where ours would go out.
Okay.
We did, we did a survey, but that's all we did.
Okay.
It was one of the steps in the process of doing the wellhead protection plan, is you have to go out and try to identify what the potential sources are, you know, encourage any of the abandoned ones to be-
Closed down.
-to be properly abandoned and filled, according to rules and regulations. Anything that was operational was left and not an issue. As John talked about, you know, we're not trying to go out and close down things that were there. We're just trying to slow the growth of any of those other things.
Answer Jim's question, that's about 1.65 miles west of the existing city limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Anyone else? I will close this hearing for the second time, and we will move to item 19, which is consideration ordinance 5114, amending the Norfolk comprehensive plan at 5700 West Norfolk Avenue from conservation development to commercial. I'd move consideration ordinance 5114. Second? Okay. Discussion.
I guess I'll comment a little bit. One of the things I noticed, that there are five C3 areas, basically from Walmart on out to about where this area is, not within a mile or so of that. And it just seems to me, there's plenty of areas, if you want C3, to, and I realize cost is maybe higher, but it seems like we're just kind of jumping out there and spinning an island out there that really doesn't fit our plan, but.
Well, realistically, if he is, has to put all the extra money into insulating it from the AM signal, it should actually be cheaper to build further away from the tower. I think it's a potential opportunity for us to review, though, as Norfolk continues to grow towards the west, you know, how's that tower going to affect our growth? And we need to be mixing sure that we're planning for that, so that we're not interfering with the tower, but we're also not interfering with the growth of Norfolk. And the wellhead protection is just a huge thing for me, too. With, as we continue to grow west, we're going to have sewer lines put in. We won't have to worry about septics in that wellhead protection area. And I think we just, we're jumping too far out to go to a commercial, and it's just spot zoning that area. Like you said, there's plenty of areas close around and in town that, you know, if we can get hooked up with the chamber or economic development and help him, give his business maybe operate somewhere else, it'd be a better opportunity, I think.
I guess I was, I was a little disappointed that Mr. Christensen wasn't here because I did have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask him, but I guess I can appreciate his opportunity to use the processes that are put in place, and I appreciate the work that staff has done to help move this forward. But I, too, had some questions initially. I thought it was kind of a square peg in a round hole. And like Ivan said, I know there's plenty of C3 zoning that's available. Like, I understand it's his land, and he has the opportunity to do what he pleases. But my biggest concern is with that expressway finally being completed, I think we need to go out there and look at it as a body, put some access roads and make some traffic entry points. I don't think it's a very good idea to start having- to start having spot locations with entries every block into an expressway where the speed limit's 60 to 65 miles an hour. So, I think instead of taking the map and throwing a dart where somebody wants to build, I think we need to go in, make a plan, and make this something we can all be proud of, so...
I think we need to also respect WJAG. When they put their tower up, they put it quite a ways out there. I mean, and so, I think it's important for us to respect that. And then, the wellhead protection thing for me, too. You know, this zoning change could pass, but I would have one heck of a time, I think, you know, permitting that. So, I think there's a lot of other opportunities and hopefully, we can help Jed with some of those commercial opportunities.
Well, I think, too, as much effort as we're putting into this wellhead protection and keeping a ring around it, the WJAG might chip in someday, too, and they may start building a ring around them. You know, not them telling them what to do, but it may be wise to cover that, which will help us cover us, too, so... Just a thought.
My comments will pretty much echo the remarks that have already been made. However, I think that I don't want to do anything to impede or any enhanced growth of our city or our commercial or industrial enterprises. But I feel at this point in time that this extension out there for C3 in that location is not warranted at all.
Okay, and I... Two things that I guess I needed, wanted to point out is, one, I believe the item that we're discussing right now is the change to the comprehensive plan. So, one thing we need to understand is that that doesn't get gender specific as far as C1, C2, C3 or anything. It's commercial in the other areas that they have there. That being said, I think this the comprehensive plan is what creates this envelope or this umbrella that's actually our protective measure out there currently. And it would be an unwise and poor decision on this body to even anticipate changing that comprehensive plan to a commercial situation. I believe at very best, it should stay at this or it should go to agriculture at the least. That reflects what the county has adjacent to it. And when I asked the question about how far the property actually was out from the city, I was, again, being a little bit facetious because I drove it on Sunday and I'm somewhere between one and a half and one and three-quarter. But I also noticed when I was coming back in from that property, the closest that we got back into a loud zoning that was in there and something that wasn't grandfathered in, we were over a mile coming back in almost, so... And that being stables there. If you remember, the situation that's occurring at Henckels is a grandfathered-in situation in an agricultural area. So, one, it would not even meet this comprehensive plan situation as we're discussing at this point in time. And two, the other thing that I think we've always pressed for, and what I always thought the Planning Commission was pressing for was orderly growth moving on out. And when we're leapfrogging in my best estimates from the divots and stale area out to this area, that is not orderly growth. So, you know, it's poor planning and if we allow something like that, it should be shame on us, so...
Dennis, I have a quick question. Our comprehensive plan, we're nearing the point where we have to update that, right? I mean, what are we into that, seven, eight years? But I mean, that's something that we're going to be looking at updating in the next...
It'll need to be updated at some time. I don't know that a formal timeframe has been determined as to when to start on the next update. Seems to me I saw something in state statute that may drive us to looking at something. I can't remember what it was now off the top of my head. I do want to make one comment about the access on off of the expressway. One of the things that the Department of Roads acquired as a part of that project will be controlled access. So, the access to the properties that will develop over time are probably there today. Now, they may have some improvements to them over time, but there is an access to this property that also serves the WJAG property and it serves a property further on to the west. So, there's, there have been provisions made to get these various pieces accessed off of the highway. And that doesn't mean that some of those access points, we don't need to make provisions to tie them together depending on what types of developments go in there. But the access points off of the highway are probably set and it will be pretty difficult to get additional locations.
Any other comments? Short title, do we have?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council persons voting against the ordinance. Ordinance 5114 fails on first reading.
Item 21 is kind of a moot issue, but I guess we need to deal with it. Has to do with changing the zoning. Introduce ordinance number 5115. Okay. Well...
Do we need to introduce it?
Let's introduce it and reject it. I guess they can bring it back. At least we considered it. I don't know what's the difference.
I'll introduce ordinance number 5115 on first reading. Second.
Okay. Any comments? Please vote.
You don't get comments? Excuse me. You're really going fast.
Since we didn't change the comprehensive plan, I figured this, I wasn't even going to consider it because we thought maybe we should deal with it.
Well, and that's why, I guess, I would like this body to consider a tabling action because technically, we can't do this zoning change in that area. And so, I would move that we table any action on this until resolution of the amendment to the comprehensive plan has gone forward because without it, we can't, cannot vote in favor of the others.
Second that.
Okay, so motion to table. Please vote.
All council persons voting in affirmative.
Okay, then we back to a public hearing again. A public hearing to comply with the provision of NRS 18-1755 before the consummation of the purchase of property by the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, which property is located at 714 South 11th Street. And I don't see Gary Miller here. Anybody want to speak to that? Oh, Gary Bretschneider is, okay, there he is.
Okay, we'll speak to this as regards to, it's a part of the revitalization, community revitalization plan that the council had an amendment at the budget meeting February 1st, 2010, which falls under Phase 2, which is when we purchase property. So, we are requesting, this is our first one that we're going after to purchase. We had $30,000 in the grant to go purchase. So, that's what this is regarding. And then, we will have a contractor build on that property and we have a buyer, a homeowner, to purchase it. And there would be down payment assistance, which comes under Phase 3, which would be available.
That's great to see something happen to this property. It's been a thorn in our side for about five years, I think.
I understand.
It's great. Any other comments, any questions for Gary? Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? Or not, I would close this hearing. And we will look at item 23, consideration approval of a real estate purchase agreement with William E. Christensen and Janet E. Christensen to a property located at 714 South 11th Street.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Not vote?
All council persons voting in affirmative.
And then, we have another situation with 24. Since we didn't approve any of the zoning, comprehensive plan change, I don't notice we need to vote on a sidewalk waiver?
I guess, before I would introduce it, I guess, the question would be, since it's on the regular agenda, would it either have to be acted on one way or another? Would it not?
Probably.
Counsel?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
I would introduce, where is it at here? The sidewalk, the resolution. I'm looking for the 2010-11. I'm on the other portion. For consideration.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote.
All council persons voting against Resolution 2010-11. Resolution fails.
Okay, then we have administrative report. Chief Feisner?
Mr. President, member of the council, it is a pleasure to be here this evening to give you a brief overview of the Police Division's annual report. You have been provided a copy of that in your packet. It's also on the city's website and the Police Division's website for any public viewing. I would like to touch just on a couple of statistics that kind of highlight them. The first one is total calls for service. This past year, the total calls for service increased by just a little over 7/10 of 1%. Now, that's a very modest increase. But the thing that's significant about that is that's the first time in seven years that we have actually experienced an increase in calls for service. The past six years have all been decreasing calls for service. So, I don't think it's an issue to be of concern. At some point, it was going to level out. So, but I just point out that we've had a trend over the last six years of decreasing calls for service. As far as criminal calls go, we did experience about a 4.5% increase in the total number of criminal calls for service received last year. And that's the second year in a row that we've had an increase in criminal calls. I would note that in our current year through April, we are showing about a 7% decrease in criminal calls compared to last year. So, I'm hoping that we'll see that level out again and continue on through the year. The biggest things we observed last year as far as increases were forgery, fraud, bad checks, assaults, and also disturbances. Those were the areas of greatest increase. One thing I would like to note is we saw about a 12.5% decrease in the number of criminal mischiefs that occurred last year. That was a very welcome change there because the year before, we'd had a significant increase. Also, in the current year, that trend is continuing. We have about 20% less this year as compared to last year as well. Regarding traffic calls, there was about a 13.7% increase in the number of traffic calls received. The biggest reason for that is we had a just a little over 41% increase in the number of parking complaints that we received. That was about 313 more than we had the previous year before. So, people are noticing when people are not obeying the parking laws. So, anyone listening, I'd like to let you know. They're calling us and we're writing tickets because on the enforcement side, the biggest increase in enforcement was the number of parking citations issued as well. So, before warned, and if you get a ticket anyway, then, well, shame on you. Service calls, we had actually a slight decrease, just a little over 2% decrease in total service calls. I was pleased to see that a significant part of that was animal complaints. Every year, we have issues regarding animals, dogs, cats, that type of thing. We had a decrease this last year and so far this year, we're continuing to see a decrease. I certainly hope that that continues. Enforcement-wise, we actually had a decrease of about 15% in total enforcement contacts that were made. As far as criminal arrests, there was a little over 6% increase in the total number of criminal arrests that were made. Again, we had a decrease in traffic enforcement. Alcohol arrests also decreased and we had a decrease in juvenile arrests. The last thing I would like to note before I close is this year, I have included the annual report provided by our school resource officer, Officer Dave Lichtenberg. I thought it would be of interest to you to take a look at that. I took just a few high points out of that to kind of give you an idea of what Officer Lichtenberg does working down at the junior high school. During this past year, and this would be calendar year 2009, he had 638 documented interventions with junior high students during the course of that year. Of those, 59 were criminal cases that he investigated, which resulted in 62 citations being issued as a result of those investigations. In addition, he also assisted on 63 other criminal investigations that were done by other officers that had something to do with a junior high student down there, whether it be a victim or a possible suspect, and he assisted them there. He also presented 26 programs to various classes in the junior high. He wasn't just in the junior high. He also spent some time, one requested to do so, to assist with issues in the middle school as well as the high school. The feedback that I have gotten from the school system is that he does an excellent job. They're very glad to have him there. And I know in the six years that he has been down there in the junior high, I think that he has made a significant difference in the lives of a lot of those young folks. And he certainly has helped us reduce the number of times patrol officers had to respond to calls down there. His having developed relationships make him much more effective than just the patrol officer off the street coming in and trying to handle the call. Historically, before we had a school resource officer there, we would kind of treat the symptoms, but we never really got down to any causes. And I think Officer Lichtenberg has helped us to kind of achieve that. And we also included the five-year trends so that you can take a look at that and see what kind of changes we've been having there. So, in conclusion, on behalf of the men and women of the Norfolk Police Division, I want to thank you for your support during 2009 and your continued support in the current year. As always, it continues to be an honor and a privilege to serve the community. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
How's their staffing, chief? Are we full board?
Right now, we're three officers down. We have just hired some officers. They are in their second week of initial training. And once they've completed that, in about the middle of June, they will start a field training officer program. And at the end of August, they will then start at the academy down at Grand Allen.
Chief, one thing I was wondering, and they do a very admirable and very appropriate job at it. When they assist in the processions for the funerals, which category does that fall underneath here or does that fall in there at all?
That falls under service calls. And I would note, that has come up from time to time as far as whether that's a good use of police services to provide those escorts. I will tell you that we have nothing that we do that receives more positive feedback from the community or citizens than family members who are very appreciative of our efforts there, helping them get through the community and just the respect that is shown by the officers as they direct the traffic.
But I guess that's what I was getting at was, I didn't know if it was a recorded item or not, but they do a very valuable service there, so...